Trustees, any questions for Dr. Malak on any of his items? Trustee Mosib?
Thank you, Dr. Malak. I have a question about graduation requirements. Were the decisions to allow students to walk or not to walk given to you personally? Or were those made at the building level?
So the decisions were kind of jointly done. The buildings really handle that. And when there is an appeal, Mr. Adam Martin from the district does have the ability to look at those situations as we started. If you're talking about credits, if you're talking about the individual situations like the one mentioned here, really, the building principals pretty much handle the whole thing on each level.
You mentioned that during the rehearsal at Dearborn High School, you were present. Were there media personnel present also?
I'm sorry?
The rehearsal at Dearborn High School, were there media personnel present?
Media?
Any media representatives, people from the media?
I don't recall. I don't remember seeing anyone. I didn't go for the ceremony. I just happened to go there for another issue. And it just happened that they were practicing graduation. So I decided to pop by and say hello to the students.
Okay.
Any other question for Dr. Malak? Trustee Barry?
Just a follow up. I got a couple of questions, but a follow up to our trustee Mosip's question. I know it was about six, seven years ago, we gave a little cushion to the high school principals and the graduation specialists. Some leeway, like a couple of weeks to figure out, you know, if students are in good standings. Is there any reason why seven students in a particular high school were approved, a waiver, whatever you want to call it, to walk on graduation? Meaning that their names were not in the booklet, but they were announced at graduation?
I'm going to call up Mr. Martin, who can comment on the process that was implemented. As we implemented a new process during, you know, looking at the credits in years past, we would have had all the requirements where the students would have been able to if they completed summer credits. So this is something that actually was started prior to the pandemic and was kind of put on hold, but notifications were put out. So I'll let Mr. Adam respond to that. Mr. Martin, excuse me.
Try it now.
Now?
Yes.
There we go. All right. Let there be sound. So to answer your question, trustee Barry, the full credit requirement to walk is actually something that predated me. Ms. Peterson before me brought this to the board and to high school principals when I was a seated high school principal back in 2019. For the rollout to begin, I want to say with the 21 class, class of 21. As we know, 1920 ended kind of crazily, and then 2021 was a little bit different. So we suspended it and through much discussion, brought it to fruition this year. And that was something that came through board briefs, came through high school principals, grad specialists, counselors, and the like. So to your question about exceptions that were that were made to walk, that was something that Dr. Malak was adamant about, right? Policies are great, but you always have to have flexibility. We knew there was, there are circumstances in the high school that we wanted to make sure that we were able to err on the side of students for, to be able to support them in walking. At the same time, we wanted to try to have the highest expectation possible, you know, in order to ensure that we are holding line and trying to get every student to graduate and fulfill those requirements when they walk across the stage. So in terms of flexibility, there were 14 total students who, I think seniors' last day of school was May 26th, possibly, that Thursday. There were actually 14 students between May 26th and when commencement happened that were allowed to walk. Five of them were able to work with their teacher, to have additional opportunities to take a final exam, turn into missing assignments, something like that. There were another nine that were approved by me on behalf of the building principal in terms of, hey, this student, we feel the building didn't support them as was necessary. For each one of those students, I poured into the data as much as I could. I tried to, I contacted the graduation specialist, graduation intervention specialist, who are hired really to ensure that all graduating seniors walk. That's their role. So they are really well versed in each student's story, each student's situation. And upon reviewing that data, made a decision for those individual students. I would tell you, for the nine students that I approved to walk, it was evident that the school may not have supported them in the way that was most supportive for their for their success. Situations like a wrong class that was scheduled or student had a 504 for some health situations or anything like that. So those are the students that were approved to walk. They still have to come to summer school to complete their credits. But there were 14 total students out of about 58 that were allowed to walk without meeting that full, those full graduation, the 23 credits or their full credit requirement.
And Adam, Mr. Martin, I think you too preliminarily have some good data on how we've implemented and we're phasing it. And we're always looking to improve that. But you have some good data too, I think, general on that.
Yeah. Yeah. At first glance and looking at the 2022 data, the class of 2022 data in terms of how many of those students needed summer school versus the class of 2023, it's cut about 50% in half. So raising the expectation and raising the bar got a lot of our students there. So they're completed and on their way. I will tell you, we've reflected on our practices too. And probably, well, I will tell you, we'll go back to the drawing board and say, hey, how can we get better, right? I talked about us maybe not supporting the students as we all felt comfortable with in terms of walking or not walking. Looking forward to working with the high school principals, grad specialists, counselors on how to do a better job with that next year.
And I think one thing we talked about was communication, just, you know, having letters or other things that we're going to look on and, you know, face to face meetings that this one class may be something that prevents you from walking. So all the notifications are done. And it's something, you know, it's just as we move through this process, it was something new that we wanted to look at to make sure that we're doing our part together as a team, everyone.
Yeah.
And I think you looked at attendance too. That was another factor.
So yeah, some of you were included on some emails from different people. And hopefully you kind of saw my thinking and my logic in it, right? Like was was them not walking a product of our lack of support? Or was there a student portion and our portion, right? And attendance was a big portion, a big deciding factor in that. Seniors do leave two weeks before, two and a half weeks before everyone else. Their second semester is only around 65 days. We did have some students requesting who had missed significant portion of that 65 days. I can't necessarily say that them not walking was a failure of our support because they didn't necessarily do their job either in terms of in terms of being there. But even then, when we had students reach out who had numerous absences, I know this from my time as a high school principal, sometimes there are circumstances that lead to those absences. So I was reaching out to the building and trying to find out, hey, what do you guys know? What does the counselor know? Again, to try to make the most informed decision. We want students to walk, right? But we also want to make sure that we are holding ourselves to a high standard.
Trustee Barry?
So yes, sir. Thank you. You mentioned we need to err on behalf of what's in the best interest of the student. I wholeheartedly agree with you there. You gave us some dates when we approved the policy, the board, and I think most of us were on that board. Let me let you know, let the audience know how we got to 2019. It used to be where if you were, you know, maybe one class short, the principal would okay for you to walk and, you know, come back, take a summer school, get your high school diploma and move on. Then it became two classes. Then it became three classes. And that's when we kind of clamped down and said, look, Dearborn Public School diploma has to mean something.
Right.
And, you know, back then, the committee sold us on, you know, the background information, all that. We were all for it. Okay? But so I agree with everything you said. Trustee Mosip asked Dr. Malak is, you know, why are you handling all these situations? But we know now that you don't handle all these situations. I handled it at the building. Okay? But you handle appeals from the parents or the students. Okay? So my question, going back to my original question, if there was seven students at one particular high school that were approved like the night before the ceremony, were all seven of those appealed to you? If my understanding of an appeal is if the student slash parent didn't agree with the decision made at the building level, and if it wasn't your track field, I mean, it would come to you.
Right.
And you know which one building I'm referring to, that's not the building you're responsible for. Which is it? I mean, were they appealed to you? Did you work with, I mean, please elaborate on that, please?
So I will tell you, one of the gifts of Dearborn is that students really advocate for themselves and parents advocate for their students, right? And I appreciate it and I love it. So as as clean as we wanted that process to be with everything funneling through the building administrator, I would be lying if I told you that we didn't have, and Ms. Jafar can attest to this, didn't have some students who came to the board office to talk with me. I did have some emails directly from parents who were reaching out on behalf of their child. The appeal process for all of those, though, I always went back to the building principal, always went back to the grad specialists and got some context in terms of making a decision. For the seven, actually more than that, for the students that that ended up being approved to walk, the nine, those appeals did come through building principals. So there wasn't, there wasn't any usurping of that. How those names came to me sometimes was from a student or sometimes from a parent reaching out. But I was always reaching back out to the principal. And oftentimes they were like, yes, they told us, they told us they were going to be coming to see you. So that's kind of how it went this year. Again, reflecting on our practice for next year, would love to have everything coming through the the building principal. Again, I love our community. Sometimes they want to go to the to the next person up. And I'm okay with that. I have an open door. But I was always including the principal in those conversations. Yes.
So yeah, so I mean, just just some final point here. Somebody made a decision for the kids can't walk before they came to central office or reached out to you. Somebody made a decision.
Right.
Along these, so yeah, it's just okay. And I'm going to follow up on this. So I mean, but just just words of wisdom here. Don't ever begin your comments with, I would be lying to you if. Because people are here, I would be.
For sure.
Because lying is not good.
Correct.
And you know, I got the greatest respect for you.
For sure.
Everybody knows that. I mean, you're a high of character, integrity. I can keep going on and on.
Yep.
But you're a person of integrity when your words and actions match.
Yeah.
And truthfulness is the greatest and most important of all human virtues. So lying is off the table.
For sure.
And as professionals, that's not an option for us. If you're lying to protect the student, if you're lying to protect the relationship. And again, I'm going to say, you know, I got nothing but the greatest respect for you. You just, you brought that up and you triggered a thought in my mind. I want to say that.
Yeah.
So thank you very much. I appreciate your answer.
Trustee Barry, if you could hold on for one second, let me, let trustee Watts jump in and then come back to you.
That's fine. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Martin, you had said that there were 58 students.
58 total, yeah.
That were not eligible to walk.
Correct.
But 14 did walk. So I guess with the remaining 44, how far are they from graduating? And what are we doing to help them and support them to graduation, I guess?
So those full 58 students didn't meet their full credit requirements. So most of those students will complete those credit requirements during summer school.
And so it's 23 credits to graduate. And each class, is it .5?
Yes.
So we're talking about a student that is three credits shy. That's six classes.
So they have a, in the traditional sense, a student has the availability to have 24 credits, six credits times four, right? So they need to get 23 out of 24, which means there's two classes grace. I would say though, between credit recovery, you could probably add another credit and a half each school year. So you're really talking about access to 30 or more credits that a student could obtain in their in their time. We don't allow, or we don't approve typically in ASAP or credit recovery initial course offerings. But to answer your point, yes, 23 out of 24 is what they need in your traditional six period for your, I would say, experience in Dearborn. We do have some students that transfer to us and it's not necessarily 23 or 24. If they've had access to and have earned more than our six credits per year, it's prorated up and it increases a little bit. But that's a small portion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, trustee Barry?
Yes, sir. No, you also, thank you very much. Appreciate you. My question is to Dr. Malak. Dr. Malak, last meeting on June 5th, I asked for all incoming ninth graders that moved into the district legally. All incoming ninth graders that all of a sudden had a new address or all incoming ninth graders that we gave a waiver, borderline waiver or school of choice option. That was on the 5th. That ninth, there was an email that went out to a family that they had their borderline exemption approved back in March. And four days after I asked that question, their approval was reversed. So that just, I followed up with a follow up question and said, I want to know how many students that were approved for school of choice that all of a sudden were denied between 6/5th, that meeting date, and the 9th, that Friday. As of 2:00 this afternoon, I still don't have that number. I hear that it's something close to eight people. Does, do you or anybody here have that number?
We do not. We're working on the requests that came in over the last couple of weeks. And again, we were closing out the school year. We do have some preliminary data that was added on the request information page with the exemption. Some of the change that we just put on today is that some of it's not available. But we probably do need some more time to look at that, you know, through student services.
Okay. I mean, but what would be a reason to approve a hardship? Then after I ask my question, all of a sudden reverse it? What could possibly be a reason to reverse a decision that we made that goes through, you know, a long process, a committee, you know, a director, somebody make a mistake? Can you think of any reasons why that might have happened?
Sure. I mean, I don't want to speculate, but it depends on what the student is. We can look at that and get back to you depending on the case.
Is our director here tonight that signed the letter? Director of Student Services?
No.
He's not? Okay.
So we can get back to you if you can let me know which student.
Almost at President Thorpe.
Any trustee Mosip?
Yeah. I communicated with President Thorpe and Dr. Malak, I believe, on Thursday on the reason for the change of the location. And for the record, I disagree with the location change. I think we could have fitted this many people in our regular administrative building. So I'd like to read the statement regarding the graduation and the decisions not to allow some students to walk and others to 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 walk. So I'm here before you, not only as a trustee of this district, but also as a voice for the countless parents and students who have been overlooked, marginalized, and failed by our district. We find ourselves at crossroads where principles of equity, parental engagement, and fairness have been pushed aside and countless opportunities for this administration to apply these principles. It's time to speak truth to power and demand change. Equity, a word that we throw around with great ease, as if it's just a buzzword to devoid any substance. But let's not forget the meaning and the true meaning of this word. It is the fair and just treatment of every individual, regardless of their race, socioeconomic status, or background. It is a principle that should guide our every decision, policy, and action. Yet it seems to be a casualty of administrative convenience. We have witnessed a stark divide between the educational opportunities offered to different segments within our district. How can we stand idly by and allow such disparities to persist? Parental engagement, crucial link between the home and school, has been treated as an afterthought. Parents are the primary advocates for their children and their education. And their involvement should be nurtured, encouraged, and valued. But instead, since I've been on the board, I've witnessed a lack of transparency, sometimes dismissive attitudes, and refusal to listen to the legitimate concerns of parents, even when we make mistakes like this one. It was so hard to admit that. Is it so hard to apologize and learn from mistakes? How can we expect children to succeed when their greatest advocates are met with indifference? Fairness, the cornerstone of a just society, justice for all, seems to have been replaced by favoritism and whom you know. The perception that decisions are made behind college doors without any regard for due process or greater good is unfortunately indeed happening when I, as a board member, and others are blindsided by news of allowing students to walk at their graduation while others were not, despite their appeal to the administration and this board. We are entrusted with the responsibility to ensure fairness, to be guardians of a system that treats everyone equally. But unfortunately, instead, I'm witnessing erosion of trust and a growing disillusionment among our constituents. My fellow trustees, we were elected to serve as a check on this administration, to be the voice for the community and uphold the values of equity, parental engagement, and fairness. It is our duty to hold the administration accountable for their actions, demand transparency, and push for change when it's needed. I call upon myself and every one of you to join me in asking the administration, led by Dr. Malak, to uphold these fundamental principles by not just words, but by actions. To the parents and students who have felt voiceless and marginalized, I want you to hear that I hear you. Your concerns are valid and your dreams for a just equitable educational system are shared by many. I will not rest until your voices are heard, your concerns are addressed, and your children are given the opportunities they deserve. Adam, congratulations. I'm very proud of you.
Trustee Mosip, I want to make sure you were finished.
I am done. Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
I just want to follow up again. When it comes to administrators, we can't throw them all in just one sentence. So I agree with most of the things you said, trustee Mosip, but we have some of the greatest administrators in this district that do amazing things, that respect our teachers. I can't say that all administrators in this district. So I know where your frustration is coming from, trustee Mosip. But it's fun to put it out there that some of our administrators come into work passionate about our students and they do a great work. Then there are those that choose a path that I'm not happy with either. So. But change takes time, trustee Mosip. Change takes time. That's all I can say. Thank you, President Thorpe.
And as we were included in some of the emails that were going around over the last couple of weeks, we'd usually turn back to administration to let them handle things. Some things we didn't hear about until after the fact. And in those cases, we have conversations amongst ourselves and with the administrators to see what we can work on and what we need to improve. And that is going to be a conversation that's going to continue to happen. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations. There we go. Commendations to adaptive PE teacher Colleen Cook and to the Special Education Department for planning and hosting a special education field day at Etzel Ford High School. The event was a great success and the students enjoyed participating. Commendations to the Dearborn High class of 1997 alumni, Michael Mikey Musalem. He recently won a Tony Award as one of the producers for Parade, which earned the Tony for Best Revival of a Musical. Commendations to a district videographer, Eric Siegfried, and Jacob Farah for their work creating a special video on Henry Ford's Steam Night and for their hard work recording and processing all seven graduation ceremonies in the district this spring. Commendations to students involved in the Dearborn High Theater Program. The students took home 16 awards and one scholarship from the Dearborn Area Theater Association Awards. These awards were given based on the students' work and performances in the productions of 12 Angry Jurors, the student-directed Scenes 29, and Mean Girls, the Musical. Also honored was Dearborn High's vocal music teacher, Jennifer Pogowski, for her work on Mean Girls, the Musical. The theater program is run by teacher and director Greg Viscomi, who just completed his 29th year in that position. Commendations to the Transportation Department for their quick response when there was a hiccup on the, on June 10th, getting buses to take Dearborn High graduates to their all-night party. Transportation supervisor Rick Sortes was able to quickly round up drivers to take students to the event. Commendations as well to the drivers Bruce Berry, Sharif Nussebi, and Samir Bazey for their assistance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Acknowledgements of donations. A donation of $728.95 has been offered to Gear Park Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for clay tools. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation in partnership with AAA to be used for driver's education. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Woodworth Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation in partnership with the National Philanthropic Trust to be used for the Garden Project. A donation of $100 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Jamal Gabasha to be used to purchase wristbands for the new fourth grade students. A donation of an alto saxophone has been offered to Duval Elementary School by Richard Bolter to be used by the music classes at Duval. A donation of $2,000 was offered to Smith Middle School by the Beauty Parlour to be used for sensory materials for the autism program. Thank you for all the donations.
Thank you very much. Trustee Barry?
Yes, President Thorpe, I offer a motion to amend the agenda to move up citizens' participation.
I was already thinking the same thing.
I'll support that motion.
What I was going to ask is, can we approve minutes and then move to citizen participation before the board?
That will work. Yes, sir.
Okay. We've got a motion and support to amend the agenda. Any other discussion on that? So when we move citizen participation before the special reports.
Need support for the motion.
I support it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you for that one.
Next, approval of minutes, approval of minutes at the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Policy Committee meeting, June 5th, 2023, Board Report 22 hyphen 150. Policy Committee meeting, June 5, 2023, Board Report 22-150. Building Insight Committee meeting, June 5, 2023, Board Report 22-151. Regular P-12 meeting, June 5, 2023, Board Report 22-152. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Barry, support by Trustee Mosip. Any corrections that we need to make to the minutes of these three meetings? Seeing none, may I attach unanimous roll? All right, please attach unanimous roll. Next item, then.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are assigned in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Board Secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. The first blue card does not have a name but would like to come to speak to the board about my graduation ceremony, a student.
And I'd let everyone know, you've already seen, we've been having some problems with the microphone, so please bear with us if we still have difficulties.
I'm here on behalf of Hatem Jalan. I'm here to have him walk up in front of everybody and graduate in front of Dearborn Public Schools, something that you guys should have allowed him to do. Hatem, please come up.
My name is Hatem, and I want to thank you for giving me a chance to talk today. I am here to share my story, a story that changed my life and left me devastated and broken. I stand before you as a former Dearborn School student that faced adversity, but I worked my hardest to be a student, to be a good student, maintaining a 3.7G pay while also working full-time to help support myself and my family. I have never gotten in trouble and walked a straight path since I stepped into Etzel Ford. But then picture this, my graduation day, the day I'd been dreaming of. Instead of walking across the stage with pride, I was at home, wearing the cap and gown that never saw the light of day. All the joy and celebration that should have filled that day were replaced with silence and disappointment. And why? All because I missed the rehearsal. The night before, I had worked until midnight, and because I was so excited, I couldn't sleep, and I missed my alarm. I slept through my alarm panic and trying to get to rehearsal on time. When I got to school, they had just wrapped up rehearsal. I spoke with two assistant principals, my counselor, the parent legion, multiple staff members, and they all directed me to the principal saying she had the final say. I found the principal and tried to explain myself, and what happened is I got nothing in return, not even a single minute to explain myself. The punishment was harsh and didn't fit what I did. I have worked my entire life to get to this moment, and in one sentence, she took that away from me. My uncle tried to come in and talk to her, but that also didn't work. I acknowledge I messed up, but did I deserve to get something I worked four years for to be taken away? No, no one does. To the principal, you are an educator. You are supposed to help guide me, not punish me and shout me out. Where is your compassion, your heart? Where is your empathy? I worked my entire life for this. Under circumstances, most kids my age wouldn't survive. You have no idea the things I had to overcome, but I'm not here just to talk about the past. I am here to ask for change. I want our policies to understand as well as discipline. I want educators to be advocates for their students. I want our education system to encourage growth and understanding, not just enforce rules. I hope we can review our disciplinary practices. This board and our superintendent need to make sure that our punishments fit the mistakes. Let's remember that we're working with young people who are still learning. That day, you did not just teach me a lesson about being punctual. You taught me that the world is a cruel place if you don't have your parents. You taught me that the world's unfair. If you have no one to advocate for you, you taught me that if I follow the chain of command, no person's decision can change my life forever. These are not lessons a kid should have learned so young. That day, you did not teach me any useful lessons. Instead, you broke my spirit, and I hope you carry that and remember that for the rest of your life, just like I will carry this for the rest of mine. Thank you.
Next, Aida El-Sayr, a parent would like to come to speak...
I think you'll need to repeat it.
Next, a parent, Aida El-Sayr, would like to come to speak to the board about student success.
What was the name again?
Aida El-Sayr.
I seen her earlier here. She might have stepped out.
If she stepped out, we'll come back to her.
Next, Crystal Jean would like to come to speak to the board about student graduation participation.
I came here to address, one, for the graduation, and, two, no, I can't see names, but Mr. Badun, he deserves his job back, and the reason why. This young gentleman, my son, and many more that are still in Etzel. He's the heart and soul of this school. These boys look up to him as a mentor, as a father figure, uncle figure, and a friend. He puts students first. What's going on in our community, in our school, in our districts? We have to put our students first, and this is the reason why, because stuff like this should never happen. You take away the good staff, the mentors, the voice of reason, then who do they have? They don't have anyone. Badun deserves his job back. My son, who's a graduate, I know what coaches are to these boys. They're there when they're down, and they pick them up. They're there at the finish line cheering them on. They lose, they are still there, picking up our sons. Don't take our men away, because Etzel only has a few good men left, and one of them is now replaced.
I would ask again, everyone, to please refrain from names.
Next, as a student, I apologize, I believe last name is Page, on Park Street, that would like to come to speak to the board about wrongful denial to walk in graduation.
I'm here to present Darren Page, to allow him to walk and graduate in front of Dearborn Public Schools, something that you should have done. I'm going to speak a few words for Darren, and then his mother filled out her own blue card, and she wishes to speak as well. I spoke two years ago about nepotism and corruption in the district. In that August board meeting, you had social workers, teachers, and current and former DPS staff telling you about the culture of toxicity and lack of accountability within the district. It is often said that in Dearborn, it's not what you know but who you know, and that couldn't be more true in the case of Darren Page. Darren didn't have the right connections to get to walk in his commencement ceremony. Mr. Martin said they didn't do their job either, referring to the students, placing the blame on the student and deflecting blame from himself for his failure to actually review the circumstances of Darren's case. Why was Darren absent so much? Because another child brought a gun to school the year earlier and traumatized him from attending. What did the school do to stop and reduce the bullying? Did you offer social work to assist him? What did you do? I know what you did. You failed the student, and then you punished him for your failures. Let's talk about Mr. Martin's admission that he holds the final say. Let's talk about him saying he would not lie in front of the board. He won't lie to you, but he would lie to the parents. He told Mrs. Page that the decision was the principals alone and not his. He lied, and we're tired of it. The accountability needs to be had. We're asking not just for the change in policy, but we're asking for heads to roll. We want accountability for the people that have failed our students and punished them. It is unacceptable, and I've said this before, the fish rots from the head down. Mr. Maleko, Dr. Maleko, we're asking you to intervene to change the culture that is now impacting our students for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
My name is Valerie Page. I am the mother of Darren Page.
Please hold down your comments.
I am the mother of Darren Page. Darren has been a product of Dearborn Public Schools since kindergarten. He has excelled in all of his classes and academics up until his junior year. He was confronted with a weapon by another student. In the school, I had the student arrested after school. Me and my husband, we met with the principal. We were told we would hear something from the board. We heard nothing, absolutely nothing, only to send my son back to Dearborn High School and find out that the boy was out of juvenile and had returned back to Dearborn High School. This traumatized my son, my family. I was told, take my son to another school. Why should I have to leave? We are African-American in Dearborn. We will not leave. We have children in Dearborn Public Schools. We have businesses. We own properties. We are not leaving Dearborn. My son was traumatized. My son did go to school as much as he could, and I was not going to push him. If he was being bullied by this boy or afraid, I was not going to push him one day. He went to school anyway, all he could, every single time, every chance, online, after school, before school, whatever he could do. We knew that he was going to be short on credits. He was robbed of his graduation walk ceremony by two credits. I begged the board. I begged the teachers. I begged the principal. I begged the counselors. I got no help whatsoever. I am so upset with the district decision on the new policies. This needs to change, and it needs to change right now. I have my son in therapy. I have therapy. Dropping him off to school every single morning, the only way the principal said that she would help me is to give him a pass to leave 15 minutes before the bell rang, so this other child wouldn't retaliate because we were scared he would. It's what these things that are going on in the world today, especially after COVID.
The three minutes is up. The three minutes is up. Thank you for your comments. If we have to clear the room, we will do it. Each speaker has only three minutes. Ma'am, your time is up. I apologize. Your time is up.
Mike Hasham from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about procedures. Is my mic on? I didn't even start. I want my three minutes back.
Your time's running.
Perfect. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Barry for being the voice of the voiceless, and Mr. Adel Mosip for having the courage to at least come out and say what needs to be said. Honestly, I've been up here multiple times. All I've been hearing is nonsense from this board. It's someone else's problem. It's not our problem. Well, whose problem is it? It's whose problem is it? Because Mr. Barry, last meeting, I was in Lebanon, thousands of miles away, watching Mr. Barry expose this whole board. The only person I seen go down today and shake both graduates' hands was Mr. Mosip. Why hasn't anyone other on this board actually have the courage to actually stand up, walk down the stairs, and go shake these kids' hands that they're going to remember for the rest of their lives? But you know what? I get it. I get it. It's the optics. You know, it's the optics, it's politics. You know, it's not our problem, it's the school's problem. Let's investigate later on. Okay, we're going to investigate, but you know what? These kids are going to remember for the rest of their lives that this body took their day away from them. And let me tell you something, when these kids grow up, become lawyers and doctors and professionals, do you think they're going to come back to you guys and look at you as supporters? Absolutely not. They're going to remember it till the grave. And my time is not up. I'm going to sit here as long as I have to grill you guys. That's what I'm here for, to grill you guys, because you guys have done nothing all year long, absolutely nothing. And to the principal of Etzel Ford and Dearborn High, don't you have the compassion and the mercy that's in your heart, that's in anyone's heart as a human, to actually have the courage and let the student walk? My brother just became a police officer, and let me tell you something, I went through the same story with my little brother, because Dearborn Public Schools failed him, failed to understand him, and guess what? The kid went on and graduated to become a police officer, and guess what? He was top of his class. With my 10 seconds, I want to say, I hope you guys go home and think about this, and think about the kids that you guys see every day in your household. Thank you.
Next, Kathy Martin would like to come to speak to the board about educator retention.
Good evening. Is it on?
Yep.
I hope everyone's summer is off to a great start. I hope the graduates are enjoying themselves, and I hope the staff, families, and the community is doing well right now. Although it is technically summer vacation, I can tell you that Central Office was buzzing with people this morning. Educators were there for various reasons, trainings, planning sessions, and negotiations. They were all working, working when they could be resting after another very difficult school year. We're lucky to have so many people in this district who are committed to us and our students. As a district, we've been dealing with an educator exodus since two thousand sixteen, well before the national exodus started. The writing has been on the wall for a while now. We know universities are shutting down their education programs due to lack of interest. We can't necessarily change state and national legislation in this room, but we can adjust how we do things in Dearborn. We know there aren't enough university graduates entering education, but we do have over a thousand certified educators working in Dearborn right now. Judging by the number of resignations rolling in, we will be starting the school year with less educators than we have now. What are we going to do to keep our amazing teachers and staff? As a union, we've surveyed our teachers and presented the district with well-thought-out creative solutions. We're eager to get teacher-backed solutions to address problems and create the necessary changes to retain staff. Every student in this district deserves to have a certified professional in every single classroom, and I hope that the district feels the same way and works hard towards a contract that will recruit and keep our great teachers so that every student gets the education that they deserve. Thank you.
Next, an employee Jihad Badun from Dearborn Heights would like to come to speak to the board about the coach of Etzel Ford.
Can you repeat the name?
I'm sorry. Jihad Badun?
My name is Jihad Badun. I'm a chemistry teacher at Etzel Ford High School. I spent four years as the boys' freshman basketball coach and four years as the boys' assistant varsity basketball coach at Etzel Ford. And for the last two years, I've had the privilege of being the girls' head varsity basketball coach at Etzel Ford. Two weeks ago, I resigned from my position as the girls' head varsity basketball coach at Etzel. I resigned from a position I loved, a position I thought I would hold for a very long time due to the unjust treatment of Coach Abraham Badun. I felt like a failure because I was just beginning to build what I hoped to be a bright and wonderful program that empowered the young women of our city, but I could not bring myself to a coach at a school or one of the most beloved individuals in our city, let alone my father was treated with such disrespect and disdain. Now, I won't share with you the stories of Coach Badun's achievements or the positive impact he's had on our youth in the city, you'll hear that from the mouths of others. Instead, as an educator and as someone intimately close to the situation, I want to shed some light on the travesty of justice that transpired. These are the facts. Coach Badun was fired from a position he held for twenty-seven years. He was fired from the position by an athletic director three months on the job who did not attend more than five minutes of a single practice. Coach Badun was given an unjust and unfair evaluation, which I read myself. In response, Coach Badun drafted a thirteen-page rebuttal and thirty pages of artifacts in support of his defense. He hand-delivered copies to the athletic director and principal. The very next day, he was fired over email. There was no sit-down to discuss the rebuttal, there was no thank you for his twenty-seven years of service or celebration for all he did for our kids. No. He was kicked to the curb like yesterday's garbage and had to watch as email after email was sent out about a newly opened coaching position at Etzel Ford. My father had to suffer through the embarrassment of students and staff, members of the community asking him if he retired or if he was leaving Etzel. It broke him. How could he tell them no, that he wasn't leaving on his own accord, that he was fired over email after dedicating his whole life to the school and program? This decision must be investigated, and the findings must be shared with the community as this cannot stand. I urge the coaches in this district to be on alert as this decision wreaks of corruption that could be happening at their schools, if not happened already. Additionally, I urge our wonderful union to add safeguards for our coaches in the coming contract to keep this from ever happening again. No coach should be fired from a job just because. Coaches are just as important as teachers in positively shaping the lives of our youth. As an educator, it is my duty to stand up in the face of injustice. As a son, it's my duty to stand up to the unjust treatment of my father. And as a member of the community, it is my duty to bring to light the wrongdoings happening in our own backyard. I hope justice will prevail. Thank you.